Yep.
Okay, I have at seven o'clock, we're now called to order zoning board of review out of North Smithfield for March first of 2022. We have one member who's remote. All of the members are present. I will vote before you call the roll. Our attorney, Archibald, is on his way. He is on Zoom in his car phone and he'll be joining us shortly when he gets to his office or residence, but he'll be with us as we need him. So why don't we call the roll, please?
Robert Nigerian.
Yeah.
Scott Martin.
Here.
Paul Pascarello.
Here.
Michael Matatano.
Here.
Vinnie Marc Antonio.
Yeah.
Gail Denoni.
Here.
Christopher Dizio.
Be here.
Okay, thank you. Before we move on to item three, four, et cetera, I was going to ask the board, in the interest of Mr. Hoyle, who's here, his continuance of his petition is listed as item eight. I would propose that we move it to between item five and six, so that he doesn't have to sit through the minutia of our housekeeping, I understand, election. So if anybody objects, we'll leave it as it is. But I find in the interest of Mr. Hoyle, would we move his petition to be the new number six? So is there anybody in favor of that, or any discussion?
I'll second that.
Do you want to make, somebody can make a motion.
I'll make a motion to move item eight to between item six and item seven. Item five, item five, item six.
We have a second. Any discussion? I'll, all opposed in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so for the record, we'll make, Mr. Hoyle will be number, the new number six, correct? RTM decision approval will be seven, and election of officers will be the new eight. Anybody agree on that? Okay, good. Item three, disclosure of no compensation or pension credits received by board members. We read this at every meeting, along with item number four. Disclosure note, zoning board of review members shall disclose any arthritic communications without any contested or material, amputatory facts or opinions concerning the merits of any application before the zoning board of review. Item five is approval of the minutes from February eighth. If all of you received that earlier in the week or in the last week. There are any corrections or additions or requested revisions, or would you present them now? If not, we can have a motion sunset.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from February.
The next motion, is there a second?
That's okay.
Okay, Mr. Deale, so those in there, any opposed? Okay, so we'll move, Mr. Hoyle, we moved you up, so in the interest of your own time here, please center up time with us, so we try to expedite things for you. When you do speak, if you do need to speak, if you're calling for, we'll do the same thing. The stenographer is online?
No, no stenographer.
We don't, because we're Zoom.
We're Zooming, we're recording.
Okay, so we're going to take the place of that, so. In the interest of Zoom, if people are watching, just come up to the podium, you don't have to raise your right hand, but I'll ask you to, just to make that statement. So the only change that we had, and I believe we left everything open, at the end of last meeting, we rescinded the vote to decline or refuse the relief, and then we reopened, we engaged the applicant. So we're back to that. Now, what we should introduce into evidence is that we were provided with a revised boundary survey plan, and we'll call that one P2A. Well, since P2 was the original survey plan, it only makes sense to me to call this one P2A because it will replace the original P2. As I can see it, and Mr. Hoyle, if you'd like, let's you come up to the podium, but as I can see it, there's only two revisions to the drawing. Normally they flag them, but it appears to be that the only two revisions are the 4.81 goes to 5.28, which is the closest encroachment, if you will, from the back corner of the garage, and the 12.26 goes to 12.74, which is the encroachment in the front corner of the garage. So, why don't you just raise your right hand and indicate that, you know, your testimony is going to be the group's most accurate statements you can make.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, sir. So we see what we see. Were there any other changes to this drawing other than the most important, social? Okay. And are you then submitting to us the idea that, so you changed the width from 14 to 13.5?
Yeah.
Okay. You didn't change the depth. Can you just explain? I'm assuming that what you're presenting to us is the only thing that will work for you, or is, or are you?
Yes, because I measured the truck, and the truck is, it's 20 feet long.
Okay. So short of hitting something as you're pulling in.
Right.
Okay. And the width works for you?
Yeah, 13.5 or 13.6 or?
Yeah, so 0.5 would be six inches here, 13 and a half feet. Okay. And what was your, are you still going to, I'm assuming you're still going to cut an opening? I mean, I refer to it as low bearing wall, which is the animal of the house. It's technically low bearing, but you could very easily put an LBLB columns and take it, ten foot wide opening right where your door is going to be, which would allow you to cheat from a pull-in. But I'm assuming that's an architectural thing that you're going to take care of the building.
Because I would like to put the new garage door the same as the old. And that's, you know, as a nine-foot door, so I'm going to go with a nine-foot door.
And then just return it in, let it burn. All right. And architecturally, as we discussed, we don't have any jurisdiction. We can't tell you whether we like blue, green, or red, or siding, or clavell. I mean, that's not our domain, it's your property. So I'm assuming if the relief were granted, we don't want to make it look like the law is.
Yes, it's going to be, it's going to be the same color as the house.
And again, you, it was your decision not to move the structure forward closer to the street.
Right, because I think it would look, you know, it would look.
Yep.
It would look different, you know?
Yeah. Part of our logic is just to try to keep things as they are as best we can. Okay. Members have specific questions to the applicant? Gail, anything?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay. All right. I think that's probably all we need from you, but before I go, before I let you go, you know, we all know what happened. We voted against it. Marc Antonio then indicated that he would be of the mind to change his opinion if it was less than five feet, or if it was greater than five, would say that. We then put it back on you, you accepted the idea to go back home and do your checking and measuring, and you came back to us. One of the things that, and we went through all of the criteria that I took, I'll do it again before we take the next vote and understand, and speak really about this new one. I'll just throw in my opinion. I originally, obviously, was against it. I mean, I still have my strong reservations, only because I just think it's too much and it's on a main street. But, you know, our job is not to use a heavy hand on, I'm not calling it average, but everyday homework, maybe you're a citizen of the town. It was a large original thing, and we're talking about 100 times this and 10 times that. You know, our focus can be a little bit different because we're trying to protect everybody. Certainly, I don't believe in giving you everything you want just because you want it. That's a whole different thing. And this is an excessive amount of relief, and it is on the main street. The only thing I was going to ask you, is, I've been planning to put it in the decision, is what if we ran a chain link fence, you know, one foot end from your property? Well, you do have to do it, obviously. You know, from that corner, you know, probably back to wherever it meets the white. You know, the white picket fence runs a certain distance, right? And then make that, you know, six feet would be the height of the fence we put if you had a pool. And you could put the fabric on the fence fabric, which would, you know, at some point, was the other thing. You can't use the argument that the neighbor isn't there, because obviously, he would agree that that house could sell tomorrow. We can't say, well, you weren't there at the time, so. And we can't fault somebody who doesn't live there for not being present to either agree or object. And it is true, you only have one abutter who even attended, and that gentleman spoke in favor, and he is to the rear.
Right.
Do you think he'd be okay with the fence? Well, what about, I think we had also spoken about landscape, you know, type of lighting, or shrub, or whatever. I'll let the board members decide, because we can talk it through. It doesn't have to be, but it was another way of creating a little bit of privacy for the neighbor. Landscape, of course, if you maintain it.
Yes, because what I do now is I maintain it and I maintain the bottom next door.
Oh, you do?
Yes.
The one that's on pillar?
Yes.
And can you ask, can you tell us why, then?
Well, at one time, she told the landscape that she couldn't afford to have the grass coming off. So as a abutter, now, you want to add grass this high next door to your house? So, you know, so I cut the grass, I've been cutting it now for four or five years.
So the woman still owns it, but just doesn't live there?
Right.
And you didn't happen to? I can't take your word on it anyway, but did you happen to talk to her about this idea?
No, I haven't.
And we couldn't take your word, whether it was truthful or not. I, you understand, even if you said yes, at least it gives us something, but we can't take that.
Now, all right, everybody here knows we're the project owners on a common law.
Yeah.
Now, anybody going by, you may know where the front three lines is?
No, but you can, you can, you can approximate it, you know, you can, you can kind of conclude because of that, the light picket fence.
Who says that it's on the front?
No, you're right, you're right.
No.
And your argument could be that by putting the fence there, you're making it worse, so. Yeah, I mean, I want to hear what board members have to say.
Because when I bought the house, 42 years ago, it was a fenced yard, exactly the same place where the white picket fence.
Did it run all the way out, or is it?
It ran all the way around the front. And I just, you know, I just replaced it with a vinyl fence.
But you didn't bring it all the way out?
No, it was in this exact place where the original fence was.
Which is kind of back by, like, comes a little bit beyond the shed, right? Okay, well, why don't you stay here for a moment? Members, does anyone have specific questions to the applicant? Even if it's regarding my idea, would they like it, do you don't like it?
Mr. Chairman, just to let you know, I'm at, Gail did have her hand up.
Okay, we'll go to Gail first.
Hi, Mr. Chairman. I have comment about having it being on the main street. It may be on the main street, but it's not a historic district, so it really isn't pertaining to a garage there because there are other, when you go past that, then you're getting a little bit more into what the houses look like in the colonial days, but since that was already built in a non-conforming, it goes past towards Village Haven, is not anything historical to be looked at. As far as the fence is concerned, if you're talking about from the pole to the garage, I'd have to say that it all depends if it, you cannot see coming out of Halliwell Drive. If you're taking a look on your left and you're seeing, you can't see oncoming traffic, that's my only problem with that, and my only comment, thank you.
Thank you. Any other members, Mr. Martin?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, so, I mean, I'm in favor of the fence, but the shrub is in the favor. How far would you think they'd come up to the front of the garage, which was built, or over the street?
No, my opinion, if I were to make a motion or ask for it to be added to the motion, only for the corner of the issue, not going to the street as Gail mentioned would be. Now we're just exaggerating and magnifying something that makes sense, and then it would create a hazard. So my only thought was, is a way of shielding the garage, that's all I think. Any other members? Okay. I mean, does anyone have any questions for the applicant? Okay, so if not, then you can sit, you can sit. Thanks, sir. Yeah, at this point, we will take a motion to close the, what we have, well, just the applicant's presentation.
So I'll make a motion to stop the presentation.
Second? Okay, all of them, all right. And I know, Colonel, I don't believe, we don't have any members of the public press doing?
No, no, sir.
Okay. Yeah, we'll close it anyway, have that motion.
We'll make a motion for the public comment.
Second. Okay, all of them, then, I like that, okay, opposed. All right, so now we'll just go back to deliberation. I had to, I have to reread this, I guess, because again, the motion will be in the affirmative. And most of what I read, what my premise was at the beginning, is still the same. I think it's just a question of all of these things apply to, we go to 9.3.1A. Again, you know, there is no true hardship in the way that is defined legally. It's the owner's request for addition of a garage. But to the letter of the law, which is substantiated by the state Superior Court, the letter of the law says that's not a hardship. Again, that doesn't mean that the council, that the board can't take that under advisement like we do with everything else that's listed here. Item B, we know clearly that there's no plan to gain, and there's no prior action. The argument that it's a non-conforming building, it's not prior action of the owner, that's a circumstance. It's not, he has no control over it, so he can't use it to his benefit. And the only reason you could interpret it to a detriment is that it is what it is. So those both are true, it's neither his action nor prior to gain. Item C, which deals with the general character of the surrounding area. Clearly, every time, virtually every time, we grant a variance, a dimensional variance, or even use variance, we're going to alter the general character of the surrounding area. In this instance, you're adding, your, your, the request is to add a garage to an existing building, house. Many, the houses in that area have one garage, I didn't see any with two. So there is a sudden alter, alteration of the general character. And the zoning ordinance, you know, that's, that's the big one, the zoning ordinance very clearly indicates that they do not, the intent of the zoning ordinance was not to encourage the magnification or increase in an existing non-conforming. So in this instance, the property has a double whammy. It's non-conforming already, and we're magnifying the non-conformity where the non-conformity exists. So there is, in my opinion, basis for a little bit of debate on that, and which we, which we had extensive debate on. Least relief necessary. The owner, applicant owner, did come back, and made a reasonable attempt. We did ask him to measure his vehicle, he did testify that his vehicle was 20 odd feet. So based on that, seeing the testimony, he would think that 24, another four feet is a reasonable and non-accessible amount of what he's indicated, his dimension of his vehicle, and he did reduce the width by 10. Item E, which is the premise that such a privilege, again, virtually every time we grant a, a variance, we are issuing, giving a special privilege to the applicant. But we'll just lay that against the merits of the decision. 9.3.2A is not, it's not a, but 9.3.2B, this again goes back to the zoning, the Rhode Island zoning book that I have referenced in my initial notes that I read, and then the threshold of a quote mere inconvenience, the need for a garage is specifically addressed, and it does not break the threshold of a mere inconvenience beyond, so it is considered a mere inconvenience. It's not considered more than that. But again, the board has the right and the authority to maneuver through this. So that is what I had originally. I don't know if members want to add anything specific that isn't, that is new from what we had previously. Vinnie?
No, I look at it. It's only one form, okay, in the five-foot area.
Randy, kind of reading your voice, just so they can hear you a little bit.
Right, and you'll need the area that is really going to have a problem. And the five-foot means ladder, you put the ladder up against the one story building, it'll be okay because it's about four and a half feet, but it won't be an emergency, anybody else can plan. The other lot has plenty of, well, man on his side, he wouldn't even notice it. And we've done this many, many, many times through the years, and it's not going to end there with falling. It's only going to add value to the area that's going to make the house look better. And we have given, other people in the same apartment, we've given, you know, we've given relief in the front yard, backyard, and the side yard, Brown School Street. And he's only looking for relief on the side yard. And the other areas in the backyard, they're all pretty well congested, and I feel as though that would be, would fit right in the mix with the building, and then would increase the value, this home, and, you know. The other house next door has no garage, it's a lonely little house, and we need something to make it look more valuable, a lot of the garage. And if they hunt for the garage, it's plenty of room and a couple of ways. So I don't really see how it's going to hurt anybody. It's snowing, it's off the road, the driveway is going to be off the road, and I just don't see how it's going to help anybody. It's just adding more value to the neighborhood. And the neighbor next door, whoever's taken care of, whether it's in the nursing home or not, somebody responsible for them, they've been in the vices of it, I think.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I mean, I just go back to the issue of the fence, land or landscape. I think in lieu of requesting something specific and making it harder on the zoning officer and the applicant, you know, maybe what we can do is indicate for the motion that once the garage is built, that some consideration be given to either plantings that would start at the front corner and go back, and/or a fence. I mean, I think if we just put it in there as a, as a consideration, we can leave it in the discretion of the zoning official and the applicant if they decide that it would look appropriate. I don't know if it's productive, it doesn't sound like members are in favor of making it an contingent requirement. And the only other thing that I would ask for, and the zoning official can comment, is there a reason for us to ask, require an as-built foundation plan, or would you do that normally?
I would do that.
Yeah, that's what I thought. So just to confirm that it's exactly where we said it should be.
Right.
Okay. All right, well, with that being said, Mr. Matatano, will you be able to? It's essentially going to be the exact same motion that we made at the previous meeting. If you want to make it again, please, without, we don't have any, at this point, members can add it, but I don't believe we have any additions to be made to the original.
I move to approve the application number 2201 by the applicant Wayne Boyle to build and attach garage to the single-family dwelling 59 School Street or Smithfield. The applicant seeks relief from section 4.4, non-conforming structures, letter A. 5.5.1 residential district dimensional regulation, side yard setbacks for an R U district.
I think, yeah, that slipped my mind, I think the only thing we should do is indicate that this decision is based on sufficient P2A, revised boundary survey.
I move to approve application number DVR 2201 by Wayne Boyle of 59 School Street, North Smithfield, to build and attach garage to the single-family dwelling in 59 School Street, North Smithfield. The applicant seeks relief from section 4.4, non-conforming structures, letter A. 5.5.1 residential dimensional, residential district dimensional regulation, side yard setbacks for an R U district. This application is based on a revised survey submission to the board listed as P2A.
Do we have a second?
I'll second, sir.
Mr. Marc Antonio, second. So we have a roll, call vote, please?
I'm second to that, I'm sorry.
Mr. Marc Antonio.
Robert Nigerian.
Yes.
Scott Martin.
Yes.
Paul Pascarello.
Yes.
Michael Matatano.
Yes.
Vinnie Marc Antonio.
Okay, thank you, sir, appreciate your patience and considerations. You're only trying to do what we thought was the right thing. Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item, new, item second. Sorry, are you?
Did you already give one for Elizabeth App?
Right. No, that's not scheduled for this meeting.
Oh, it's not, okay.
You'll get notification, what was subject for a second, excellent gentleman, we don't want to waste your time.
Okay.
You're here for that variance request?
Yeah, I just wanted to hear what was going on with that.
Oh, hold on a moment. You sent, did you schedule it then?
Yes, it's next Tuesday.
Oh, next Tuesday, that's right. Oh, sorry. So it's next Tuesday, seven o'clock here.
Okay. I'll be on that.
Thank you.
All right. I'm sorry. It's all in the words, appreciate it. Thank you. Very much.
Okay, slipped my mind. Okay, so item seven is now the approval of the decision for RTM realty, DVR-21-04. All of you, I think one member didn't get it previously, but everyone else had it before. You sent it out again this evening. Mr. Martin was the chairman for that meeting, but it doesn't matter, I'm just, all we're doing is approving the decision. Were there any revisions requested of the written document?
Mr. Chairman?
The only one I saw, the chairman was on page one, you have to add my name as well, 04.
I'm gonna start for the day.
Yeah, I have no time.
Oh?
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, there's only four listed, uh, there's only four listed. Scott, Mr. Martin, Mr. Pascarello, Mr. Martin Antonio, and Mr. Benomi.
Yeah, hello, stand up, send me. Yeah, you may, you must have caught up on, on.
Okay, so maybe what we can do is if we approve it, if that's the only revision, we can prove it with a note that the cover sheet needs to be revised to add, um, Mr. DeZiel to that, okay, why don't you show them?
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, yes, Mr. Benomi.
Uh, there's only a few, um, misspellings, so everything else is good.
Okay, very good, um. I don't think we need a roll call, cause this is just an approval of the written decision.
I got, I have, I, you know, I corrected something.
Oh, you did, okay, so you can modify it?
Yeah.
Alright, uh, all those, and do we have a motion to accept?
Um, I'm making a motion to accept.
Uh, we have a second, Mr. Martin. Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstained, okay, decision, this approved, uh, Mr. Martin, you need to check with the secretary and sign up for a leave so she can be for you. Okay, uh, item eight, election of officers. Uh, what do we do, we do, uh, we do chairman first? Yeah, yeah, we do three, we do chairman, vice chairman, and secretary.
On their motion for number zero, two?
Second? Okay, any other? I just wanted to check, any other, any other names, motion to close?
Motion to close?
Second? Uh, I guess we'll, yeah, we'll call it. So that's for chairman, for myself, for twenty twenty two, even though we're in March, yeah.
I don't have you, I mean, I don't call your name.
I don't believe so.
Okay.
Alright, well, no, you do, yeah, 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 that's, yeah, that's true, yeah, yeah, it's an election, that's right.
Okay. Uh, Robert Nigerian?
Yes.
Scott Martin?
Yes.
Paul Bascarello?
Yes.
Michael Mafatano?
Yes.
Benny Mark Antonio?
Well, thank you very much, I appreciate, respect that, yeah. Uh, both, uh, always trying to do the best that we can to move forward with the new year, so I look forward to back working with all of you again for the wonderful group. There are a little here. Uh, nomination for vice chairman. Now, I would nominate Mr. Martin. Second, second, any other nominations for vice chairman? I hear it done, do we have a motion to close the vice chairman? Make that motion, okay, we have a second, I'm then, roll call, vote for vice chairman for Mr. Martin.
Um, I just have a quick question, because of the election, did Gale and Chris get the vote too?
No, they're alternates, so they don't vote.
Oh, okay, I just didn't wanna leave any good out.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, Robert Nigerian?
Yes.
Bob Martin?
Yes.
Paul Bascarello?
Yes.
Michael Mafatano?
Yes.
Benny Mark Antonio?
Uh, congratulations, Mr. Martin. We'll go with another productive year. Then we have the last position as secretary. Uh, Mr. Pascarello was the, was the incumbent. So I'll make the motion to, uh, nominate him to continue in that position as secretary.
Second?
Mr. Martin with the second, any other nomination?
I'll close the nomination.
Hear it done, yeah, we'll take a motion, second, the motion to close?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, that's right, just to close the motion, yeah, but I don't think we need to, yeah. Okay, roll call on the, on the nomination of Mr. Pascarello as the, uh, secretary.
Bob Martin?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Robert Nigerian?
Yes.
Paul Bascarello?
Yes.
Michael Mafatano?
Yes.
Benny Mark Antonio?
Congratulations, all. I'm sorry. He's gonna stand in one there. Bring his laptop, he'll take the motion. Okay, and after that, uh, we have, uh, there will be nothing else on the agenda, so thank you, we'll return, we have a second?
I'll say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We'll see you next week.
See you next week.